Just because we've got so many great seniors every year. They've had four years, three and a half years to accomplish so much. So, we are excited to do our first senior. That's Aubrey Pearson. Aubrey was nominated by Mr. James and Mr. Reader. And just a few things about Aubrey. She's been in the NHS, Luger Symposium attendee, Hoosier Girl State participant. Really active in our local history project and the Alumni Association. She volunteers at the library. She's in cross-country and also does track. And we're really excited to honor her. She's ranked fourth right now in her class. And so I know she has over a 4.0. And just found out, oh, I knew she was going to IU, but she's a big Purdue fan. So that's gonna be difficult. I think she wants to go into be an optometrist. So Aubrey Pearson, congratulations.
Go ahead and stay up here before we get a picture. If all the rest of the students of the month would come up and get a picture. Actually, we go right there by the... Thank you so much. There you go.
Can I have everybody look this way? And then you guys will look for your parents, too. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, thir- If you guys need to look that way.
Congratulations, everybody.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say this. I've known Aubrey since she was a little girl. And it's kind of exciting now that she's gonna go IU and be an optometrist and be able to see things clearly.
And parents and students, you can definitely leave at this time if you wish. We know this is probably family time and stuff. So, feel free. Yep, thank you. Yeah, continue.
Next up, we'll have a presentation of the facility study.
Yes, we have our friends from Schmidt and Associates to present kind of where they're at on the facility study. Not a problem.
We're good?
Yeah, you're good to go.
We have a paper for everybody.
Yep, yep.
Well, if you can go to the... Shelley, are you driving the...
I am.
Okay, great. If you could go to the agenda, I'll talk about that real quick. The items that are bold are the items that we've kind of been working on since. The other items up through page eight, that's what we presented last time we were here. So, if you wanted to... And that was all the, you know, who the core group is and the staff input, the board input, core group inputs. You've seen all that. It's in your PowerPoint, what we're doing. Does everybody have a copy? Do you have a paper copy? Okay, great. Basically, we are adding to that PowerPoint each time we meet. So, you have information that you had before, and then we're adding to it. And I think we probably have at least one more meeting, one more after that perhaps. We gotta sort all that out. But if you want to jump to 22, that's where we want to go to today. You've seen all that. And just give you a quick update. I think maybe you've even seen some of this. But yeah, back to, yeah, back to 22, and then we'll...
You're on 25. Oh, you're on the wrong way.
Sorry.
All right.
Right. There you go, yeah.
One more, two more? There's 22. There you go. I think you all saw this last time. Just a reminder, we looked at the site conditions, building envelope, environmental conditions, interior finishes, environmental, really HVAC. It's electrical, plumbing, technology system. So, that's what we look at with the conditional part of the assessment. So, if you want to flip the next one. The, and just as a reminder, we score on a zero to four basis. We've done all that. We've scored on a maybe a 0.5 increment. Zero being poor, four being brand-new. And that gives us an overall suitability score of what the building is and the system. So, what you saw last time when we were here, if you want to flip the next one, please, that's the overall suitability score. We might have fine-tuned things a little bit and adjusted some scores since we met. But essentially, this is about where we were last time. Knowing that the Transportation Center scored the lowest on all those conditions. When you roll up that overall suitability, again, 100% would be everything scored a four. And then 69% for the elementary school. Probably not a surprise. And then in the middle, the football locker, football restroom building, then the high school and middle school. We're real close to each other. We did try to score them separately because we do want to identify the middle school and the high school, even though in a lot of cases, they share systems. And so we tried to take that into account. So, the next slide, I think you have not seen. This is a little more detail that breaks it down now, how you get that overall suitability score by architecture, electrical, interiors, mechanical, plumbing site, all the things that we just talked about. You can see where the scores are here. This is obviously the Transportation Center. So, the things that scored really low, that pulled it down, were really technology and plumbing. Technology may not be that big of a deal for what's going on with the Transportation Center. But some things that we noticed that weren't there. Otherwise, the other scores are in the 50 to 60. And that all rolls up into that 47%. So, if you want to go to the next slide. And stop me if you've got any questions. We're just kind of giving you the summary from our team's onsite conditional assessment. Same thing here for the football locker building. Score high in architecture. It's, you know, it's relatively new compared to some of your other buildings. Electrical and mechanical were up there. Site not too bad. Interiors, a lot of residential-type casework and that type of thing. So, we noticed that, a lot of finishes, doors. Plumbing and technology a little bit low as well. And then I will say that the next building, the concession, calling it the concession restroom building. If you want to flip to that one. Very similar. Our team scored a little bit better for the architectural component, 78%. Plumbing was low again, just again, residential-type fixtures, that sort of thing. Same with interiors. So, those are the scores that rolled up there.
Is the overall sustainability score the average of those? Or are those...
Suitability, overall suitability, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Essentially, it is. Like, for instance, HVAC may be worth 30% of the building.
So, it's kind of weighted?
It is weighted.
It's weighted for whatever functional...
Yep. The way we do that is if you're gonna build a brand-new building, we know site is essentially worth 10%. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology, 35%. Exterior enclosure maybe 35, something like that. So, we've created that document that way. If you're gonna build a new building, you need to weight it. So, if mechanical, electrical, plumbing and technology are 35% of the building, they score really low, that'll pull that score down. Because those are, those systems are expensive to build.
So, it's based on the dollars to build?
Yes.
I mean, that's kind of how you're weighting it, right?
Absolutely, yep. So, that's what that means. Good question. That's what rolls up in that 49%. But it's, seeing the overall suitability is nice to see. But you really need to drill it down and say, where are the items that are pulling the number up or pulling the number down? So, and we've got, if you go, if we go to our mechanical assessment, the scope document, which I'm gonna talk about in a minute, you can see all the mechanical systems and which ones are good, which ones aren't. And that sort of thing that helped with that score. So, the next building, just kind of zip through that again. The scores are going up a little bit, but not a whole lot. 58% here at the high school. You'll see it. And we, for the, for the systems that are shared, we assigned those to the high school. So, the, kind of, some of the mechanical systems are shared. But there are some systems that stand alone in each, you know, electrical systems and things like that. So, we did, we were able to split that high school up. We know where the dividing line is. Anna Marie's looking at that with kind of the space programming as well. So, you can see the different numbers there. They all starting to kind of go up a little bit. Technology's pretty good. But there are a few things in technology we might want to look at. And then on high school, or on the middle school coming up next, which again, they were very close to the same. Site scored a little bit more because your parking lot's, you know, pretty good shape back there. And then again, technology was high, interiors high as well. And plumbing was a little bit low. The interiors on the middle school, there's plenty of things to fix in the middle school. But in general, that number was about 62%. But we did identify a lot of things, and we'll go through those details probably next time. Well, actually, I have some of that here in a minute, but we'll get into the costs and details next time we get together. And then the elementary school, everything scored into that kind of the green category, if you will. 87% for the interiors. So, you can see that. And that's not surprising, a newer building. But certainly some things we found there that can go on that watch list of things to fix.
And again, sorry.
No, no problem.
But this is more like the functional, I mean, this is like the assessment of the functionality more than like...
The condition, the condition.
The condition.
Yep, yes, yes.
Physical things, so not like...
Yeah. The way we break this down is conditional assessment. You know, what's, you know, what's, if a chiller's failing, that needs to go on the list. That is a score. So, those things start to identify chillers, flooring. Everything you can see gets a conditional score. And then we put it on a list. And anything that scores 2.5 or 2 or lower or 1, we want to make sure we're looking at that on a potential project list.
But at this point, we're not taking in like student experience?
That...
Impact on creative elements, stuff like that, that's not in there.
That's kind of part of it, yeah. And the other part, the other thing we break it down by is staff input. There's a lot of things that the staff will tell us that we also see in the conditional assessment. They'll say HVAC needs fixture. Well, our team solved some of those things, and so we know that. But they may say something like, we need a car rider awning to shield the kids from the rain. We may not see that in the conditional assessment, so that's why staff input. There's a list of staff input things, and that student experience is part of that, too. Dress up the front door. Make sure where everybody knows where the front door is. Things like that kind of go into that staff input category. And then space programming, which we look at is the building, the right size. Your elementary's tight, you know that. Where are areas where you need to add some space or renovate? So, we break it down into conditional assessment, staff input, and space programming to kind of come up with what is the, what is it we're gonna do.
And I guess that's kind of offering my question.
Yeah.
We know that elementary's tight. Where's that reflected in these numbers? Like, I'm surprised you thought of green.
Couple more slides.
That's coming up. We've got, what we have tonight more than this is probably to talk, start talking about space.
Okay.
That's coming up. Nope. But I wanted to see this because these are new slides since the last time we met. So, next one. And the energy analysis, we did show you this last time. Your high school, middle school building and your elementary school building, you're all electrical. That does run the cost up a little bit. We do want to compare it to, you know, what are national averages? Really, $1.50 per square foot. If you have 100,000 square-foot buildings, it should cost you $150,000 at the high end to run that building. And you've got some that are higher than that. So, we've got a detailed report. It's not in here, but we have a detailed report that we will share that shows here are some ideas to optimize your energy. So, that's part of what we want to do as we start moving forward. This was in there last time. Not much change, but we have a few square footage numbers that needed tweaks. So, these are updated numbers. So, I think the next slide shows this in a graphical form. Shelley, if you want to show that one. Yeah, so these are pretty high. You know, we would want to see something down in here. You know, so your middle high school's not too bad, but there's something going on at the elementary school we really want to dig into. Our engineers have some ideas that we want to probably talk about. So, that's the energy analysis. Any questions on that? And again, there's probably 10 to 12 other pages that give you the detail of that. So, I'll hit these quickly just to get, to keep you moving. This is the conditional assessment. Again, we got conditional assessment, staff input and space programming. The conditional assessment, these are the items we identified when we were out, our team was out walking around. We put in a few photos for each building or each site. We have a whole bunch of photos that talk about all these things. But you can see where we started listing some of the items that did not score well. And they'll probably go on a list of things that may be projects. At least, we think they should be considered either now, next year, five years, something that goes on that list. We break it down by site, and you can see drainage, there's some drainage areas. Our civil engineer identified architectural, some exterior walls, windows. We have detail behind that that tells us what those items are. I think some of your brick needs some repair. We do projects where you just go around and once a year allocate a little money to do some tuck-pointing, things like that. So, that would, that'd be what was identified there. Mechanical, a lot of items on the mechanical list here for the elementary school. Chillers, boilers, hot water pumps. There's some electrical items, plumbing, technology. And then the staff input items are here at the bottom. So, we may not have picked all this up in the conditional assessment, like acoustics between rooms. We may not see that, but we heard it. We heard the staff, from them telling us, we hear each other. So, we might want to look at putting a project in there that maybe shores up or takes walls up to the deck or something like that to close off that sound a little bit. So, that's what's down here in the staff input. So, that's the elementary school. And then the middle school, I did not list them all here because there's a lot of electrical and plumbing needs at the middle school, and I think it's the same at the high school. Roof access was something we heard quite a bit about. And then this, yeah, so we'll go to the high school. High school, again, it's a bigger building. We signed more to that, so there's probably more on there. But again, these are all detailed into our scope document, our Excel spreadsheet. But instead of me typing them all out here, we just wanted to let you know, we found a lot. We found a lot for MEP in those areas. And then a few items for your site, interior and those sorts of things. And then a lot of staff input that we want to make sure that we're tracking. And again, if staff input told us, hey, we need window screens, well, we already knew that because we found it up in conditional assessment. So, there's the car rider awning, an example of something we may not have seen, but we heard. And then the next couple buildings, I put those on one page. A lot of, and these two buildings, they're not in bad shape. They're working for you. But we've identified things that we need to put on a list. And then with the core group, say, are these important? Or is it more important to work inside the school buildings? Those are type of decisions you have to look at. But there may be some safety things. You're definitely, your ramp, that is a big monster ramp out there. There's probably some things that could start being touched up to improve that. Or maybe there's even another way to get down to the field we could look at. But those, there's items there. Plumbing, plumbing, there's a lot of plumbing items. Again, because I think a lot of it was just residential-type items that were put in. And the next, and then these numbers that you see here, those are our rough preliminary estimates. We're fine-tuning those, and those are just for the conditional assessments. If we have to decide we're gonna do a building addition or a major renovation somewhere, that's coming up next in our next part of the study. So, this is the Transportation Center. These were comments from them. The building's not too bad, but it's not in the best spot. It's, it doesn't have all the, the fuel tanks was identified as being pretty old, a fueling system. And it's, it might, this is what we heard from the staff, you know, build a new one. Maybe that's, maybe that's an option. We can at least put a cost out there. Maybe that frees some other space up and that sort of thing. But it's getting dated. And then the next building?
We're saying the project cost, like the $1.8 million.
Yeah.
You're saying if we fix all these things, you're projecting it would be $1.8 million to fix all these things?
In that range. And that's a preliminary number, we're still fine-tuning it. But that would be to just to fix what you have, right? It doesn't mean you got any more space. It doesn't mean you're, you know, it's, that's...
So, it'll be important to fit into the rest of the plan? Because if you need that space for something else, you might spend $1.8 million if you're gonna build it someplace else, right?
Absolutely, right. That's how you start to compare, what's it cost if we build a new one somewhere else versus, you know, this? But if you say, hey, we're gonna keep it here, and that's what we're gonna do, then you gotta decide, do we want to dump $1.8 million into it? Or whatever that number is in the next two to three years, as you start looking at it. So, I just put this up here. We've talked about this a lot with you. I know we were talking to you very beginning. Everything's in this Excel spreadsheet. Our team has all those, all that information in there. We've also, what we've started doing since the last time we met with you was we started putting in those conditional assessment costs. So, that's where you get the numbers that are starting to roll up at the top. Our team has put down, if you need a new chiller, they've put the cost in there for that in this year's budget numbers. And as we start to set priorities over the next few years, we can have, we can add inflation to that, interest, that sort of thing. We want to make sure that if we put it out in 20, if do the building project in 2030, what's it cost then compared to now? But everything's working on today's dollars for the moment. So, that's just a little touch. And again, we'll have, we'll have all the staff input items that we think are important and any of the space programming items that go in there. So, you have a full, comprehensive look at what are the decisions we get to make. So, that's that. Now, we did also look at your vacant land. Our civil engineer spent some time looking at that. So, we've got it broken down into four properties. The two-top, the nice flat field that you have to the, next to the football field. That's about 20 acres or so. Then your property three is about 21 acres down here in the kind of the yellow. And then the odd-shaped one at 8.21. And if you want to turn the page, Shelley, and this is in your information there. We'll, sites one and two, though, we, our civil assigned a probability, a buildability score of four out of five. I would give it a 4.5 or a 5 out of 5. It's a pretty good site to build on. That's the best site, if you're gonna build something, that site's, that site's pretty good. Your other ones are challenging. 1.5 is what he put on property three and about .5 on property four. Property three, a lot of woods, a lot of, there's 30 feet of relief across that side. So, what would be a little challenging to build on? Doesn't mean you couldn't. But it's certainly more challenging to build there than here. So, what does that site used for? Maybe there's some road opportunities for different access into the school campus. Certainly, on property four, you could do that there as well. But you've got your transmission lines and the tower and all that sort of thing, so...
And that would change based on what you were gonna build there as well, right?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Putting a school building there would be tough, you know?
Might be an admin.
Could be, yeah, yeah, something smaller. Certainly, I don't think you're gonna fit a school building on there. So, the next slide was done for just fun. We showed this to the core group last time. We'll talk about this later, aren't we? Or you want me to just do it now? Okay. So, we took an elementary school because we wanted to see how it would fit. This is a new elementary we did down in New Albany about six, seven years ago. It's 80,000 square feet. Green Valley Elementary School, we put it on there to scale, and that site would work well. You have access to utilities, and it's, and it would fit. We wanted to just see how that would work. And you probably already knew this, but it's nice to take a similar, a building that may be the same size you come up with, that's what we're working on, plop it on there and see how it might fit. So, I think...
So, when you're asking about the actual space of the school and what the functional capacity of the school is, that is what our, this next portion of the presentation is. Go ahead. And so, what we're doing is we're looking at the existing conditions of the building. We're looking at the existing spaces that are there. We've walked the buildings. We have looked at your educational program that is happening in each one of the buildings. And we have located where it's happened. And then we've met with the school leadership to talk through the programs that we might not have known about, things that potentially are coming to the building, things that have changed from last year. And we are, what we're trying to do is really understand how it's being used right now so that we can start to look at different options. So, when Kyle was saying, hey, what does an 80,000 square-foot building look like somewhere else? Or do we need to add on to a facility? Or do we just need to do some changing in the facilities to make them be utilized better? How can we do that? So, if you go to the next slide, this is showing for the elementary school, the results. And how can you get that piece of paper? We have one of these charts for each one of the buildings. So, you can see a summary of what the existing square footage that is in the building and the different categories. The categories are the classrooms, your core classrooms. So, the elementary, that's your pre-K through fifth. It is your support, student support and special ed spaces, which is the next one over. Your specials, that is like the media center. That is your gymnasiums. Then we had pulled that cafeteria on each one of them, the dining and the kitchen, because we know that's a tight spot near us. And then we have administration, which also has some of the staff support. All of the yellow that you see there is, we're gonna go through a couple slides here. I won't bore you with all of them. But the yellow is showing here the, what we would be looking at if programming it, when we're looking at code, we're looking at facilities, we don't at other places. We're looking at the capacities that you have in each one of the rooms because we're looking at the functional capacity. For an elementary, you really want to be somewhere around 90% in the core classrooms. I will tell you that your leadership of all your buildings are master schedulers to be able to fit the amount of kids in here. Because we are looking at your existing enrollment. We know count day is on October 1st. So, we are going to adjust these to be what you are on count day. We're using numbers right now just as a whole for each one of the buildings. So, for instance, here at the elementary, we know that you have 756 students, or we're using that number in the building. We can change that on this also. And if we do that, it's gonna change the need, and we can see what a potential need might be of space and classrooms. But when we do this on the amount of kids that you have in the elementary for the core classrooms, it is telling us that you are over 100% capacity. Like, you are, you're there. We're also doing some things that can also change this number. So, things that can change your functional capacity are the number of kids in a class. But right now, we're looking at an average of 25 kids in a class for elementaries. And in, if they're in case, it's the preschool classroom, we're looking at more like the 15 students for a class. And so, on these spreadsheets that you see here, that kind of go through each one of those categories that you saw on the columns before of existing to what we would potentially see your needs are, you're able to kind of see the difference in square footage down here. What this is telling you is you could help this by either putting more students in a classroom or if you were to have more classes of each one of those sizes. So, right now, at the elementary, you're at 100% capacity. We know that there are also some programs that you're looking at bringing over there next year, like a community preschool. And in all of this, really, there are no flex rooms. And so, things such as teacher workrooms are taken and used for some of the programs that you're pulling in. Go to the next slide here. This starts to look at some of the things that we noticed as we were doing this and talking this through with the principal and leadership. As far as some of the needs that we saw for potentially special ed are because you've got the grade of K through five, right? They're in special ed rooms, they're all together. And so, if there was the space, it would be nice to be able to have that separated into two different, two different spaces. Multilingual, and the support for that is growing. And so, that space there's seeing into the future is gonna be a potential space need there. And then you have a lot of services that come into the building. And so, having space for them to be able to meet and be with the students. I think right now, they're taking the one conference room that the staff has there, or they're going into somebody's office. So, really, every little nook and cranny of the building is being utilized by the things that are happening right now. And you can see the differences over here in this column that starts to show where those deficiencies are in each one of those. If you go to the next slide. This starts to show what we're calling the specials, and that's the spaces like the gym. And here, you know, as we look at this and the amount of students that are there at the school, scheduling and having the PE in there is very hard as far as the amount of gym floor space that you have in the, in the elementary. Looking at the after-school care, so as we talked about it, thoughts, you know, so the after-school care is in a portable that's in the back. If we are looking at different scenarios, is there a way to be able to pull that into the building and maybe have it more upfront inside of the building? And then there's the programs that are being pulled in now, like the Fab Lab, that's the one I was talking about that's going into one of the teacher workrooms. And so, as you just talked about this, a 750-student elementary is a large elementary. And so, really needing that space, again, for, you know, out recess when it's inclement weather or getting groups together when you have a gym that's tight and you'll go to the next one. Cafeteria is also very tight. You, potential need for another space. We do see in these sized elementaries having spaces such as other multipurpose spaces that are helping with those kind of, that kind of scheduling. Cafeteria extremely tight. They're running the three lunches through there, and there's a little bit of overlap as you're doing it. If you've been there during lunchtime, I know that you've probably seen it. They're using tight furniture and trying to make it do. But the numbers do prove, the numbers that we would typically use if we're looking at that kind of space, they are proving that, that yes, there is a definite deficiency in that space right there.
And then plus, plus we know, sorry, Anna Marie, plus we know from your demographic study that you're gonna grow maybe 300-some students over 10 years. So, that could be 25 per classroom, 25 per grade level over the next 10 years. We've got to make sure we're keeping that in mind if we're building out a five, six-year plan, that sort of thing, so...
Yeah. And so, when we start to look at things like, you know, staff, staff support, and again, spaces for restrooms for both students and for the staff, this starts to outline that there is definitely some need there. Again, knowing that people are really being good in multipurposing spaces and offices are becoming conference rooms, they're being touchdown spaces. And so, this starts to, down here at the end, then show maybe a potential difference in additional space when you look at it as opposed to what you have to what we would typically program. And it's saying that there's probably about a twenty-three thousand square foot deficiency there.
That's all in, everything?
Yeah, everything we just talked about right here, yeah, with the amount of students.
Bar chart where you're showing like five hundred, like the very first chart you showed us? You know, program square footage, it's got the bar chart, page forty-three. Like how does that relate?
So it's the bottom of each one of these, it's taking, when we did each one of these categories right here, so administration.
Yeah.
It is looking at what we would typically see in the square footage needed per code in some instances, what we've seen other places for the programs being serviced in each one of these spaces. Opposed to, we literally went in there and took the square footages. We put everything into Revit, that's the, the program. And we pulled the exact square footage out of each of those spaces and that's what that is right here. So we're comparing it so we can see, and the negatives, you can start to see, it might be a program that it just doesn't have a space or it's, you know, something in the future that planning for over here. So when you see those negatives, that's what it is. It doesn't mean we do all of this, but it starts to give us that chart to look at.
And that first chart, I, to be honest, I looked at it first time I asked the question. So classroom space were kind of okay, is what that's telling me.
Well, you are a hundred percent, it's over, so you need more space.
Right, it's five hundred square foot though, or something like that.
Yeah.
And I get that's over, I understand that. But like where we're really in trouble is these other areas, which is going to add up to the twenty-three thousand.
If you get any more students, you're really in trouble.
Yeah.
And according to the demographic study, you are, so.
Great, that was encouraging, thanks.
And we tested the last core group meeting, we went off through all this just to make sure we're getting a head nod on some of the findings that we had, because we're really, this is math, right? We're going in and we are taking what we see, what is actually there, just to kind of prove what we heard from the staff input that everybody was saying, hey, it's really tight in the cafeteria. This is proving it mathematically to us, like what they're saying is there. You want to go to the next one? Okay, so at the high school, again, here's the chart. It starts to show all the different spaces that the high school is using and the different colors represent the different, the different categories that we're going to go through when we look at it. Go to the next one? Go ahead, no, go two more. Go one more. So with a, with, with the high school, because the students are changing classes, unlike the elementary where they're in a classroom where we can be at ninety percent functional, you know, capacity, right? You want to be more in the eighty-eight, eighty-five percent for a high school. And we, you are actually at seventy-five percent. So that is telling you that you have room in the area for the high school for growth and flexibility. And what we're also finding there though, is there are some smaller classrooms. You are an average of, depends on what the class is obviously, about eighteen students in a classroom. When we take the overall average, and that is what we are doing our numbers off of right here. And it is a seven out of eight day period. So if you can change the functional capacity, if you change any of those type of things, right, when you're looking at it. And what we found right now is it probably is only, there are two rooms that are probably open and flex rooms and they're being used for things such as when you have the college fair or somebody come in and stuff like that. So they are being, being utilized. And so when you look at the chart that Kyle just handed out, this right here is the difference when you look at the core classrooms against what we would typically see and what is actually there. Do the next one? So this is the specials and the student support. As we were talking through the different programs and things, we talked about in the future the need for potentially some more resource spaces for special ed or for just the student support. Also the multilingual space, maybe some of that also needed to grow. When we get further into this, when we talked about the media center, it was, well, maybe we could take some of that space and utilize that differently and pull in some things such as some of the resource space that we need right here. So this is now about maybe looking at places where there's inefficiencies or some space that we could use differently and taking it and using it for those things that we see we might need. I'll tell you that the one, a big need here is restrooms. Placement of restrooms, restrooms around the athletics commons. There is a huge need for student restrooms and for staff support.
And that was probably a staff comment too.
It was.
But we also discovered it, so, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's, 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 and some of the restrooms, I will say you don't need, need eighty-eight. Go ahead to the next one. So this is showing more of the specials, gymnasium, use surge space, there is no surge space. There is no commons outside of your athletics area, you know, you're traveling right through that with the concessions right there, the hospitality right there. And then the path of egress and the restrooms are inadequate, again, go back to restrooms, in, in that area. So you do share all this, there's that connection between the, the middle school. But even as we were looking at the high school, it felt like there could be the need for another, I'm not, I'm going to say court, but it could be a multipurpose type of space, right, for the things that you were trying to program athletically and PE-wise when you're just looking at, at the high school. So gym space, the training and laundry is right there in the athletic area with the athletic office, it's, it's tight. And then again, here's the media center where maybe that, that space could be used, that some of that space could be used differently and pulled into some of the other things that, that there is a need for. The, there's a little conversation about, well, your ag area, you've got an awesome area back there, but how could that be, be used differently? There's a lot of space back there, cavernous when you, outside of the classroom space. And so maybe that is some space that could be, could be full. And then the need for being able to get groups together potentially for testing, et cetera, and utilizing, having a multipurpose space here and how can that, can space be used differently for that? Go ahead. Go one more. And so staff, for the overall cafeteria, it's appropriately sized because the high school has a smaller enrollment, but they share it with the middle school. So it kind of causes a little bit of an issue there because it's the middle school with the way that they're right now. They're programming and wanting to do one lunch for all middle schoolers. It's still creating some, some problems. So that the amount of students that are there for the high school, there is enough space for the dining area, they just don't have a student, or they don't, I believe, they need a staff dining room. There's no dining room, it was taken for something.
But when you're evaluating that one, are you just looking at the high school?
Right, the second, our, our next exercise that we're doing on Wednesday is getting with the core group and we're going to start to look at what can we still be sharing, right, with these numbers right here? So that's actually happening Wednesday too. Because you're right, they, does, how much bigger does it need to be so you guys can still share it? Or does it need to be bigger, the dining space?
But the answer is that, basically just the high school.
Yeah, the middle school has its numbers and it needs more space. The way that it is being scheduled right now. Go to the next one. And then we get to administration guidance and staff support. So staff restrooms, they're not very many throughout the building. Guidance, guidance is really tight, I don't know. Guidance is very, very tight. And I think the progression into the building where you have the secure entry and the waiting area. And then there are some awesome services that are there, but are they in the right place? Like the Bulldog pantry, right? I think that there's conflict in time when there's pickup drop-offs, there's a lot of congestion in there areas. So it could be, could it be in a different, different area than right up there in, in the front? And then there are, again, people that are visiting the school coming in and meeting with students and meeting with staffs and parents and there's really, you know, finding space so that they're not maybe kicking the principal out of the principal's office, maybe meeting in there at that time. Okay, go ahead. And then really circulation and those relief spaces, when you walk, this is, this is student experience. There's narrow corridors throughout that high school and the way finding, you know, you don't really have like relief spaces in the corners of corridors, which can really cause a lot of tension when people are circulating through there. And so circulation in this building is actually very, very low compared to what we would typically see. Because you need, typically need to have relief spaces when you're coming out of side of things like the gymnasium, even auditorium or even at the knuckles of corridors. And then Trinity would not let me live down if I did not talk about the electrical service room is like a closet. And as you look at things, there's probably a need and any kind of renovations to have a much bigger space for, for that. All right, we're going to go on to the middle school, last one. Again, this is starting to show in the same color scheme what the different, the different pieces are and where they are. You can see that, again, we've got the dining here and we're also, they use the auditorium too. So we're showing that in the band and the choir, those are the shared spaces between the two. That red line defines kind of the division between the building here, where we see high school on one side, middle school on the other side, but where we also see them also using some of the spaces over here. So if you look at the numbers for middle school, it's the same, you want to be between that eighty and seventy, or the eighty and the eighty-five percent for functional capacity. Go one more slide. This is, the middle school is about eighty-six percent. So it's, it's more than up there. There's larger classrooms, it's about twenty-two students per class right now is what you're averaging at each one of those classes. And you're also trying to pull over some of the functions that had been going over to the high school. So there are some certain things that this year are there at, at the high school now. Again, you're also giving every student though what I need, the win, win program too. So when we look at that, there aren't any additional flex classrooms in the middle school. And it's telling us that, again, the scheduling is what's keeping it working right now. And you're doing miraculous things and trying to balance the capacity of, of that building. Do you go to the next slide? This would be special ed student support. There are some nice spaces for the student resource throughout and students are able to get to spaces. So I, this, this actually is looking pretty good. The next one. And this is the, the specials. Here is also when we look at some of the labs, there are some programs here that are just putting into spaces because you have those spaces. And ideally, maybe some of those spaces could be a little bit larger and have a different infrastructure and be able to support those classes such, such as ag and maybe STEM lab. Music and performing arts, they are sharing that again with the high school. And so having a schedule between the two different schools and not having potentially other space. There might be programs that you aren't able to offer just because of the space and the scheduling and the sharing. And there is, we looked at the PE and athletics and look at the gym floor, potential need for another floor or another athletic or PE space to help with that type of scheduling. You look at the media center, it could, there's actually space in the media center and we talked a little bit about how could some of that be utilized a little bit differently? And the multipurpose space, right now, the middle school is not currently also using that because I know broadcasting is, has pulled into that space. And the need for just making sure that there's some additional student restrooms. Go ahead to the next one. Cafeteria, this is where you can see, as we looked at the other ones, there is a deficit right now for the amount of students that they're trying to have in there. One time, the next one? Go one more. Administration and guidance, that's pretty tight. You did bring, the clinic has been reopened again so that there can be, I think, an aide or someone come over for, and from, and have a space at the, at the middle school, so that's taken away some office space. Also having some itinerary, touchdowns kind of spaces and guidance space. And then we look at, the entry vest wheel, really tight, right there, the entry vest wheel in the waiting area. Next one?
Good, that's kind of the end of that, right?
Yeah, so our next steps are, this Wednesday, all of those different colors that you saw there on the plans. We made those into pieces and we are working with the core group. And we are going to start to look at what, what the priorities are from all of those different space findings that we have to share.
So yeah, that's, just ended up on the schedule, we adjusted this a little bit with, with Mr. Provo to make sure that we're given the time we need to. There's a lot here, there's a lot of information pulled together, we still have things to do. But we want to make sure that this, this report is the best it can be for you. So coming up is, yeah, this, that, in two days, tomorrow, two days.
Two days, the tenth.
We have our, our core planning group to do our exercise with, with the principals in that group on, on what the spaces can be, what we need to do and what, what they think, talk through that, down on the seventeenth, we're going to regroup, kind of continue that. Whoops. Did I do that? Did I do that? No. Okay, so we got, we have another one set for the seventeenth. We think two more meetings will do it, but for, at least for now. But if we think we need another, we'll talk about it, make sure we're doing things right. We hope, hopefully, we'll, we will have a final presentation for you on the thirteenth. If, and if we, if not, we feel like we need to go to November. We would only do that if we think that's the best thing to do in order to make sure that we're putting out the best product for you, because that'll be here quick. But that's, that's our goal right now, we're going to get a lot done, I think, in the next two weeks with the core group. We're going to start plugging in costs, things we need to do is finalize the space programming, finalize the cost estimates. We're already halfway through it with some of our conditional assessments. Now, what comes out of space programming is going to have a cost to it, so what is that? Looking at some of that staff input items that may, may not be captured in either one of those, what are those costs? So we can start putting that into a, our spreadsheet, into our scope spreadsheet. This, the scope spreadsheet has all the costs in it and then it can be sorted out by next year, the next year, the next year, of next year, so that we can start to say, what are the priorities? And our team's pretty good at saying, this boiler needs to be replaced within the next five years, three to five years. So now it gives us a range of saying, okay, let's put it in year four and at least give you some targets. Those things may change and adjust, but at least gives us some goals as to what may be the priorities. So that's where we are for now and we'll, we'll keep moving. Any, I think, that's it, any questions for us?
Just a reminder, that thirteenth is actually going to be the sixth.
That's right, that's right, thank you.
Or a week earlier, because it's fall break.
Be here on the sixth, okay, board, not, not the thirteenth, so we'll have, we'll make sure we're ready for that. So, thank you.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. A little concerning.
Yeah.
All right, well, next up is public comments and nobody had signed up for that. So we will move on to where we will temporarily suspend original meeting and then start our budget hearing.
Yep, so this is the month.
Sit seven twenty-seven will be the time for the stop and the start.
Yep. So this is the month when we have our budget hearing. So this is basically just to go over kind of what we're looking at for the budgets. Nothing gets voted on tonight or approved, that's the next month in October when we would actually adopt the budget. So tonight is just to go over it and then there is a time for public comments if anybody has any about of kind of what I talk about here. Do you have these up there? Okay, so first thing I'll talk about is the form you see up there on the screen. It's the notice to taxpayers, that was uploaded to Gateway, which is where we have to put this for the Department of Local Government Finance. We uploaded that on August fifteenth, it went on our website on the twentieth. What you see here is information obviously about, you know, when this meeting's taking place, but also then when is the adoption meeting? And then you see a bunch of budget numbers down there. Column two, where it says budget estimate, that is where we estimate what we think we will need to spend out of each area there to the left. So for example, let me talk about rainy day, you see rainy day, it says budget estimate of five hundred thousand. That just basically means that we're going to ask the state that if we need to spend five hundred thousand dollars out of rainy day, we would have the appropriation to do that. We have the cash to do it, we've got one point, a little over one point nine million, actually closer to two million in rainy day. Do not have to spend that, but if we needed to, we'd have the appropriations to do that. Debt service, we're estimating five point nine, almost six million. That's the fund where we pay past debts out of for, you know, work we've done around the, the, the school corporation. Bonds we've taken out, things like that. Once again, is that a hard and fast number that we're going to spend exactly that much? No, we could, but we could spend less than that. It all, all depends on how those debt payments come out, but we're estimating that's kind of what we need to appropriate to meet our debt payments. Education fund, same thing, twelve point four million, estimating, that's what we're going to ask the, the state to spend. Once again, it's an estimate. Will we need to spend that much? Maybe. Might not need to spend that much, we'll see. Operations, same thing, four point three million. So for an overall budget, you see down there in totals of twenty-three point two, basically. Column three, maximum estimated funds to be raised. That is basically us talking about only those funds that have a tax rate, where we actually get tax funds. Property taxes, things like that. Rainy day, we don't get any property taxes from that, so there's, there's nothing to be raised there. Debt service, estimating that we will have a levy, so we'll bring in five point seven million in taxes. Once again, just an estimate, we're not for sure that's how much we're going to, we're going to raise. Same thing in operations, two point six million for a total down there of eight point three. And then as you go across, talks about there's what the current tax levy would be. So it just gives you kind of an example of kind of what we're estimating, what we're doing currently. Like I said, once again, all estimates. We're still looking at a dollar seven tax rate, so that has not increased at all yet. So dollar seven tax rate is what we're working toward. So that's a little bit about that sheet there.
Yeah. Quick question for you on that. So I guess, you know, we've talked about some budget struggles that we're going to have, right? I mean, where we're seeing the tax levy of two point six million dollars for twenty, twenty whatever the next year is, right?
Yep.
The four percent increase, that's the maximum we're allowed to increase.
It's the maximum we can get.
Four percent a year on the operations funds, to be clear.
That's the max.
But that's the gap, right? But that's the gap, right? 4.3 to 2.6.
Correct.
And that's, these numbers are before we take in the property tax bills. I mean, this is based on current situation.
Correct.
Not the new legislation that's going to start to reduce the SS value.
Correct.
That's making the $2.6 million be less.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay. Just thought that might be an important point.
Absolutely. Next up, a couple of things we have to do for the budget that has to be made public is school bus replacement plan. You have to take this out a certain amount of years. We go beyond the statutory amount of years you have to go. I think you have to do six. We take it out a little bit further than that. So you just kind of see kind of what we're planning for over the years as we cycle through buses. You know, buses get to a point where you need to get rid of them, bring in new. So that just kind of takes you through what we're planning on doing there. Are we held to this? No. This is just our thinking of what we might need to do. But the state does not look at this and like, hey, did you do this with these buses in these years? No. Matter of fact, I don't know the school that's ever been really called on the carpet by the state to really look at this and find out if you did exactly what you were planning on doing. It's just kind of an estimate of what you're going to do. Does give you a good idea, though, of what buses cost these days. Those have went up dramatically. I think it was just five, six years ago, a brand new bus. Well, Perry can tell you. There you go. Now we're setting it 165. Yep. So it's hitting us there too, unfortunately. And then next is the capital projects plan we have to put out. Once again, these are just ideas of things we might want to do. Once again, are we held to this? You know, that because we put this out here that we have to do these projects? No. It's just to help us plan and make plans and that sort of thing. Matter of fact, a CPF plan is good for three years from the date you adopt the budget. So we could still be going back and doing projects on a CPF plan that was put into place three years ago. So it's just things we've put on there to help us plan. Are these some things we've identified that probably need to be done? Sure. But once again, still not held to that standard that we have to do these. And the same thing with the projected cost. Those are just projected costs that we've either come up with or we've talked to, we've gotten quotes, like, hey, what would it cost to do this? And we put that number in there. So it just helps us plan long term for what we might want to do in the future. So really, a lot of those are self-explanatory. I don't think there's anything on there that you wouldn't understand by looking at what it is and then what it, what the amount is there. So I think that is just about it, other than to tell you. So in October, the October meeting is when, if everything still looks good, the board would, I'd make the recommendation to the board that we adopt this budget and they sign off on all the paperwork and we have to upload it to the state and all of that. So that's my main presentation on the budget.
Are there any public comments on what he just went over with our budget? Then we will close at 7:35, the budget hearing. And then we're going to open up the appropriations hearing.
Yes.
At 7:35.
Okay. So this, what we're doing this time does have to do with our current budget, where we're sitting right now. So I'm asking the board, and we're not going to approve this tonight, we're just having the hearing, just like we did with the budget hearing. This, I'll ask the board to approve this in October also. So we are asking the DLGF to approve an $800,000 additional appropriation in operations. So basically, what that means is we did our budget last year, thought we were going to spend X amount of dollars. We believe we're going to exceed that. So we need to do an additional appropriation to allow us to spend more in operations than what we estimated. We're asking for 800,000. We don't know that we're going to need to spend that much, but we wanted to buffer it enough that if we did, then we did. So basically, that's what we're doing tonight is just having the hearing. Once again, we can have public comment on that. But unfortunately, spending in operations is more than what we estimated it was going to be for different reasons. Utilities being one of the big ones. Utilities have gone up quite a bit. We have done some cost-cutting measures, obviously, to help in the operations fund also, but we're still probably going to overspend by a little bit.
Does that just bleed into cash balance?
Yes. Yeah, we have to.
We can't go back to the well, we get more money, right?
Correct. So we have to show the DLGF that we would have enough cash to do this. We think we will, but we'll have to prove that to them once we get closer, probably to the, our tax draw, as one will know. So that's my comments on that one.
Are there any comments on the appropriations hearing? We'll close that hearing at 7:38. And reconvene on our original meeting at 7:38 with the consideration of our meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we combine the special board meeting and the regular board meeting into one motion.
I'll second. Mr. Sears, any further discussion on the consideration of minutes approval? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Item number eight, consideration of claims and payroll.
I've got a couple of comments of some things that aren't normally on there month to month. There's a claim for $180,892 to Energy Harness. That's our continued lighting project. They have continued to hit some indoor spots that were missed in the first go-around. We did a walkthrough with them to make sure they're hitting all those spots. So they're hitting some of those. They completed the football locker room. Now they're currently working on the football field and getting those replaced. After that, they'll continue moving to our other athletic fields there. But that's to pay for the work they've either completed or for the materials that we have shipped here and on hand. So I want to talk about that one. $93,706 to Howard Technology. That is the PA system upgrade in this building that they're going to actually get started on this week. We had a claim of $53,891 to Turnkey Mechanical. That was to replace the water heater replacement in the elementary. We had some curricular materials that we paid for. That was paid out of education fund. Those previous ones I talked about were coming out of bond funds. Curricular materials have to come out of education fund. There's some small ones under 5,000 each, but the two big ones were IXL, which is a program that is used, I think, K through 8? What school is that? Just elementary? Three through eight? Yeah. IXL at $15,657 and Savis Learning for $58,465. And that was for some English materials we had to adopt. So I want to bring your attention to that. And then we made our last installment for the 24, 25 school year to Area 31. That's our vocational center where we send kids, for $35,239.22. And that was only one, if we pay them quarterly? Yeah. So if you multiply that times four, that shows you how much we pay for vocational students to go. It's a great program, but it's a cost, definitely a cost. So anyway, those are the things I wanted to draw your attention to during the claims this month that aren't normally there.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim, the amount of $1,000, or $1,710,164.07. And if you want to combine the three payrolls, we can do that as well. Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second? That would be combining the claims and the payrolls?
Yes.
I'll second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion on either?
The lighting, I know that we've kind of paid as it's, are we paying what we expected? Or are we, are we paying more than what we thought? Is the overall project budget comparable to what we thought it would have to be here?
Absolutely. Yeah, no change orders.
You bid it.
All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of personnel recommendations. Certified first.
Yeah, we did have one, certified resignation. Kelly Bungard is resigning as preschool teacher. Just want to thank her for her service over the years, those preschool kids.
Mr. Kennedy, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Elliott, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item B, the classified.
Yeah, once again, did have a few resignations. I want to thank all of them for their service to our kids over the years. Want to draw all attention to specifically Scott Hamilton, our safety director. Scott's been great for us over the past year. Really came in and just did some great things for us. We're going to miss him. He just has a great opportunity to go to the town of Bargertsville, which is exploding, and do some code compliance with them. And it's going to allow him to retire in five to six years, going to put him in a position to do that. And I told him, I said, I can't blame you for doing that. So really going to miss him. We do have a plan, want to make sure everybody understands, we do have a plan to have us, you know, the safety of our schools is paramount. There will be still officers on here, on campus. He's worked to get his position covered until we find somebody. So we hope to have somebody found here within a month or so, we would hope. So I think that's it for that one.
A motion to approve, classified?
I'll second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I got Brock with the first motion and Kevin with the second. Any further discussion on the classified? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item C, which is the ECA.
Yeah, there is one on here that we're going to do a little bit more explanation on. And I'm actually going to ask Mr. Gageus, our AD, to talk about this a little bit. And that is Bailey Wilson. This is actually the second month in a row that she's been on here. So we want to explain a little bit about kind of what's going on there. We've been working with teachers' organization also on the, because this all, you know, has to do with our ECA, you know, contract and that sort of thing. So Mr. Gageus, if you wouldn't mind kind of talking about what we're doing here?
Yeah, so, so, excuse me. Last month, when her recommendation was presented, the recommendation had her as both seventh grade and eighth grade volleyball coach. There is an addendum in the contract that I wasn't aware of where that position is. When you fill a second position for both seventh grade and eighth grade, that second position is a half of the stipend to be paid out. She's doing middle school by herself, so the readjustment of that is that for the eighth grade, she's receiving half of the stipend of the head coach and half of the stipend of the assistant coach. The middle school position is, it's actually like $300 more being done that way, but that's consistent with what's in the contract, in the contract language.
Can you kind of speak to the JV?
Yeah, so the other.
You mean to speak to that too?
Sure. So the other issue is with JV position for volleyball. Back in the spring, the assistant coach who was hired was recommended, there's two different stipends. One is a higher stipend for varsity assistant and a lower stipend for a JV coach. Bailey's helping out with the high school program in some situations, on some Saturdays, at some tournaments that they're going to, when JV goes to a separate tournament than the varsity does. Samantha, who's recommended originally, and what's recommended here is a switch for her from the JV position to the varsity assistant position. She's the one who does the majority of the work at the high school. And so the recommendation is for her to have the higher stipend at the high school and for Bailey to have the lower stipend of the two assistant coaches at the high school.
But overall, the money is kind of just.
Correct.
It's all split. It's just the positions are a little bit.
That's correct.
Tracked on the, I mean, they're not really doing these things.
That's correct. The stipends are split between the positions.
Which is also consistent with what other, some other sports teams are doing.
It's one that we're talking about, maybe cleaning up.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve. I would ask if we can get kind of that explanation in the minutes, however, we can kind of do it so when we look at it, you know, a year from now, we can know what happened.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Elliott, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item B, which is the substitution.
Yeah, I want any comments on that one?
I'll move to approve. Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the substitute? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to item 10, which is the consideration of the 2025, 2026 Murgate School Safety Plan Update.
Yeah, just very minimal changes, really just changes some vocab to make sure it's matching exactly how we're talking to staff and kids about safety and what to do in different situations and things like that. So really no major comments because it's just really some minor language changes, really nothing major changes in the way we do things or stuff like that, so.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Blundell, any further discussion on the handbook? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five to zero. Item 11, consideration of the contract for the custodial services.
Yes, I want to give some background on what I'm going to recommend here. I am recommending that we contract with a custodial service for some night janitorial services at the elementary only. So back when we had to make the unfortunate decision to let go of six of our custodians due to our operations budget, the remaining custodians, maintenance staff, any directors we still had, we sat down with them and talked about, okay, here's our team right now, here's how this is going to work, here's who's doing what, all that stuff. Went through that. We asked, okay, is everybody good? Everybody on board? We had yeses all around. Just a couple of days after that, we had our night custodian at the elementary resign, just fine, you know, sometimes people have to move on. But that left us with a obviously big hole at night to get any cleaning done that needs to be done. So what we've been doing since then is filling that with anybody, custodians over here that would work their full shift and wanted to go over and work for a few hours at the elementary right after their day shift here, would do that. We have a bus driver who wanted to do some cleaning, so we filled with that too. But long story short, we have to have a more long-term plan for that. We can't, you know, work people to the bone and expect them to keep doing that type of thing. So we reached out to some janitorial services, got three quotes, got a quote from Stratus, quote from Sherwood Services, and a quote from Eclipse Staffing. Stratus came back at 3,900 to 4,000 a month. Sherwood came back at 4,400 a month. And Eclipse came back at 3,760 a month. And that would be for 40 hours a week. In the contract that the board has and is already drawn up, we have given them the specifics of what we want done in that building so that if it's not getting done, we can revert back to the contract to say, it's in the contract, you're supposed to be doing these things. So we'll be held accountable for that. It actually will be a cost savings because the spending that we were doing with a person that we employed was about 4,755 a month. And so I'm going to address the fact that, you know, I've heard some information going around that this was the plan all along, that we're going to get rid of people so we could bring in these janitorial services. Couldn't be further from the truth. Like I said, we had a meeting to make sure everybody was on board with the remaining staff that we had and who was going to work what areas. And everybody was on board with that. So at no time before now did we feel like we had to make a decision to hire some janitorial services to get our elementary clean. So that's kind of the background and what I'm recommending. So I am recommending that we go with Eclipse Staffing at 3,760 a month for 40 hours a week at the elementary only at night. at thirty-seven-sixty a month for forty hours a week at the elementary only at night.
Motion to approve the custodial services contract?
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Kennedy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sears, further discussion?
So, the saving, I'm just, just making sure.
Sure.
This cost is less than what the cost of the position of the person that resigned?
Yes. Mostly because we don't, we don't have to pay benefits to this company. That company has to pay any benefits to that, to those people.
Now, will we have anybody in the building, a school, a school employee in the building when they're in there? Are they in there by themselves?
Uh, they, I mean, if we have any teachers and stuff working late, that's a possibility, but any like other janitorial or maintenance people, no.
I'd say get background checks, obviously, if you're kind of looking at a school.
Yeah, we typically get background checks from any vendors that we use.
Now, I guess who's responsible to kind of check after, make sure it's working out, you know, they're doing a good job? Who, who, who does that?
Ultimately, like our adminis, building administrators will let us know if they see anything that's not up to par. Brett Everett is right now over all custodians, so he would be overseeing it too, and then ultimately me, obviously.
So, they would just know by when they come in in the morning what kind of shape it is in?
Yep, if we see dirty areas and areas that we know they're supposed to be taken care of, it will get reported up the chain, and then we'll talk to the.
So, they, they would just report that to Brett, and then Brett would call the company?
Yep.
So, if you're not satisfied, let somebody know.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the custodial services? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item number twelve, consideration of a virtual program.
Yeah, so, after some discussions with, you know, board and, and things like that, it was decided that we would look at the possibility of starting a virtual program if the board chose to do so at tonight's meeting. What we've done to try to gauge interest is we obviously put some information out about how this would look, sent out an interest survey via that same message where parents could click and fill out an interest survey if they're interested in their, their children to participate in a virtual program. We've gotten those back. So far, we have, I think we're up to thirty-two, no, take about thirty-one. Thirty-one students that are interested in a virtual program. For full transparency, twenty-three of those are our own students that already attend here full-time. So, that would take a bit of a hit to funding, because when you go from a full-time student down to a virtual student, you automatically go down to eighty-five percent funding from the state. But we would also not get that full eighty-five, because we are partnering, if, if the board chooses to do this, we would be partnering with vendors at both the K through five, if we go down that low, and the six through twelve. There, there's obviously a cost there. So, overall, we would get about sixty-four percent of the funding. The vendor would get the other portion, obviously, of the, of the eighty-five percent. So, basically, what we have to look at here is, yes, we would, we would lose some funding. It all depends on kind of what we want to try to get out of this. Pretty much all the schools around us have this going now. So, we need to decide, are we going to rip the Band-Aid off now, even though, yes, it could cost a little bit of funding, knowing that it could grow and that could be made up? It could even be made up at the semester, who knows? Because we could allow students to come here at the semester. That's kind of what you need to decide tonight if we want to take, take that into consideration. I did talk to Chad Blacklock at Steeple, who we work with. He's of the opinion that, yeah, it's, it's kind of a slippery slope whichever side you go down, but he's also of the opinion that, like you said, everybody around us has it. If we're going to start it, might be better to rip the Band-Aid off now, start it, instead of waiting another year. That was his, that was his opinion that he gave me today, so. Leslie, anything I'm forgetting? Leslie Gilli, who's going to, you know, if this goes through, she'd be the head of our virtual program. Anything I'm missing, forgot to talk about?
I, I guess my question, and look, the thing I'm worried about is cannibalizing our own students, right, which is, we've kind of talked about that. I mean, that is a problem. I don't know that I think the twenty-three are all going to sign up, so I don't know if it's.
Right.
I mean, that's the worst case that we know right now. But like, is there a way for us to kind of put a stopgap in there by eliminating the number of students as we kind of test this to see if it works? And then like, how are we going to market this going forward? I mean, the real purpose is to attract students probably that aren't students at our school, right? Like, do we have a plan for how we're going to market that and reach, you know, those students and try to attract students from other districts? I mean, I know, I know their school districts are doing it thus, right? So, I mean, I guess that would be my thing, right? I mean, we got to really be smart about how we're going to go after the students, I think.
So, to answer your first question about can we put any, any stops to, you know, numbers of kids and that sort of thing, the first thing that we have the ability to do is, you know, the, the state gives us the power to decide where students are placed. So, just because we're opening a virtual school doesn't mean that if, if a parent wants to sign their kid up for it, they're not guaranteed to be able to do that. Matter of fact, there's, they, they actually have to go through a, kind of a screening interview with Leslie, and that's when we would decide whether we feel like they would be successful or not. And we would obviously take into account information from teachers, counselors, stuff like that. But yeah, we have the ability to put any type of limit on it we want. Like, right now, we said we were going to kind of limit it to thirty overall. We're obviously there, that's if everybody signs up. So, yeah, we have the ability to put all kinds of limits on it. As far as how we push it out there more and advertise it, I think every so often, we do what we've already done, which is to put out information via social media, website, that we've got this up and running if we choose to do that. Here's what it entails. I mean, just keep the information flowing as much as we can out there, especially when it comes to the semester time or the start of the next school year, when people are deciding what they want to do.
How would it look? Like, what's a, if they start this and decide it's not working out for their kid, what, is there an easy end, back end? I mean, what is that going to be? Next year or semester?
I believe we put in the contract that they, they have to stay for at least a semester, correct?
We've asked them to try to stay for a year. We asked them to somehow just stay through the end of the school year, but if there are issues, if something's not working, if we see on our end that something isn't working, we can have a meeting with the family and determine what steps.
Nothing would stop them if they wanted to un-enroll from ours to go to another virtual, they could do that, and we don't have any way to stop them from that. But we can make decisions on whether you're coming back to our classrooms based off of what's, what's going on.
Yeah, just to know if somebody's in a career change or something.
Right.
They could be home with their.
Yeah, there's always going to be extenuating circumstances.
And I saw in the contract too, like, anybody that was enrolled in the virtual program has to come back onsite for in-state testing, those kind of things. That means they kind of factor into our overall scores and those things as well, right? I mean, it's like our IREDS scores, whatever.
Correct.
In our vested interest to make sure we put the right kids there.
So, if they have to have kind of a self-evaluation done before they move into, what's, I mean, are they looking for, what kind of student are they looking for? I mean, I'm assuming it has to be kind of a self-motivated, I mean, this isn't just, I don't want to go to school. I can, I can do this online, you know, be on the computer for an hour for the day and get through. I mean, it's, there's a lot to it, right? I mean, they're still getting a good education.
Yeah, I mean, the, the Indiana Online, which is who, who we would partner with for six through twelve, it's a pretty robust program. They have, a, a majority of their classes have a live teacher. You're just looking through, talking to them through a screen and that sort of thing. The Ed Options Academy, which would be the K through five, it's not as much live as, as Indiana Online is, but there's options there for the, the student to get help from a live tutor and things like that if they would need that. So, yeah, it's, it's a pretty robust program. It's all up to, you know, what, what parents feel is best for their kids. I mean, I know that not everybody believes that virtual schooling is, is the way to go. Obviously, I have some reservations about, about that too, but as the legislation is moving more toward parents should have the right to choose what their, what their kid does as far as their education, we have to kind of gauge whether our priority is to get into that competition for that, parents deciding where their kids are going to go and that sort of thing. But to also answer your question about what type of students do this, it's, it's a myriad of students. Like, we've had kids who are extremely good students, like toward the top of their class, that want to go virtual, because they're like, I am very motivated. I can get this done and get done earlier and go do something else. Either start my career, go to vocational school, start college earlier, that sort of thing. You have some kids who the brick and mortar setting is not good for them. They need, they need a different setting than other kids. So, yeah, you get a little bit of a mixture there, but ultimately, yes, you're correct. We want to put kids in a, in a path to succeed, so we need to make sure that we feel they're going to succeed in that realm.
Now, would these students be allowed to do like prom, you know, extracurricular activities that's done at the school?
Right, so what, the way we have it set up in the contract now is that to do extracurricular activities, you have to live in Monrovia's district to get it started anyway. Prom, we had a discussion about, I can't remember what we discussed there. Yeah, so, yeah, that, that's another point. So, high school's going to be a little bit different than everything else, because high school, we have to abide by IHSA rules. Since we are partnering with a vendor, that is, that is considered basically the same as homeschooling. So, the IHSA requires a student to attend at least one class live at the building where they're going to play the sport. The other thing there too is they would not be eligible right away unless they already start. If they start this program as a freshman, they'd be eligible, but if they're a sophomore through senior, they wouldn't be eligible until after, is it a semester, John? They'd be, after a semester, they'd be eligible.
Are we responsible for providing them transportation to the school for that one class?
No.
I mean, that's in the contract or?
Yeah, I believe it, I think we put transportation in there. Yep, no, that'd be up to the parent to get them here.
I mean, ultimately, we're responsible for the student outcome though.
Correct.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's ultimately what we're, and everything is in the contract, right? So, it really comes down to, do we believe more kids are going to enroll and that we'll be able to grow the program?
Right.
Really what I think it comes down to. My personal belief is, look, everybody else is doing it, we're going to have to do it. Or else we're going to lose those students, right? I mean, people that have a propensity to do that are going to do that, and they're going to find a way.
I, I think we have at least a couple right now that are fully believe this is going to happen, and if it doesn't, I think we'll, they'll probably go elsewhere.
How do you gauge the success of it? I mean, is this something that we'll look at at the end of the year and say, well, this is how it went, this is what we learned? This was, didn't work?
Yep. No, we'll have, we'll have to take a look at that. I mean, we have to report on these kids, just like we do anybody else, so we'll have to look at grades, and there is an attendance piece. Attendance is gauged by, you know, are they working on the days? Are they logging in and getting stuff done? State mandated testing. I mean, there's all kinds of metrics we can use to, to look at that, to make, make sure. And, you know, Leslie does a very good job, because we already have some kids that are virtual, and she does a great job of keeping tabs on those kids and making sure they're, her and her staff, she's got other people helping her do that. Making sure that they're making the progress they need to make.
And this is doable, to be monitored with the current staff we got?
Yeah.
Got a motion to, got a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Blundell, are there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
And then so, just real quickly, for any families that might be watching, or just anybody for transparency, we'll get the ball rolling then on getting information out to those families who definitely want to enroll and let you know what the next steps are, so you'll start hearing from us pretty soon.
Next up, item thirteen, which is permission to receive a donation to the Operation Fund from A.J. Fiber.
Yeah, so A.J. Fiber, we had needed some work done. Can you remind me what that was, Perry? What, what they do for us?
We were fixing a suckhole.
Yes.
Camera line ran through a piece of tile, and we cut it down into two spots. So, A.J. Fiber is actually, I can't think of his person.
Andy, Andy Jones?
Andy Jones, I was thinking back.
Yeah, yeah.
Andy Jones, that's what he does, so he comes out and donated all his labor.
Yep. Yep, so four hundred dollar donation from A.J. Fiber to do that work. Greatly appreciate that.
Move to approve.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion with the donation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five to zero. Item fourteen, which is another donation to the FFA, ECA from Monrovia Alumni Association.
Yeah, donated thirty-nine-hundred dollars, so that goes toward our students attending the FFA National Convention, which is, any of you who've ever been around, it's usually in Indianapolis when that's going on, it is, it's a lot going on, but very neat for the kids. So, thank you to the Alumni Association for that.
I'll move to approve. Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion on the donation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five to zero. Item fifteen, which is other.
Yeah, I got a few things I want to discuss as far as just, really just some stuff going on. I first want to read a, a statement that I, I wrote. Once again, this just comes out in the spirit of transparency. I want to make sure that we're sharing as much information as possible with everybody, and really to kind of hopefully dispel some information that might be floating around out there. So, I'm a lot better when I put my thoughts down on paper and I can just kind of read it and I can plan on, on what I want to say, so that's why I'm going to kind of read this, so. But once again, just trying to be very transparent in, in everything that we do. "With the passage of Senate-enrolled Act One and shrinking cash balances in the Education and Operations Fund, Monroe Greg School District has had some very difficult choices to make this summer. As many of you know, we had to make some reductions across several categories within our schools. We held a meeting for school staff on July thirtieth to describe the reductions that had been identified. We also put out a statement to the community via Facebook that reductions were inevitable due to SCA One. We will continue to communicate and be transparent with future decisions. I would like to quickly address some of the reactions to these necessary reductions. I've been told that there have been some very negative feedback on social media forums. I don't belong to any of these forums, but what I'm being told secondhand, I feel I can trust. Much of what I'm being told is that district leadership is being accused of ulterior motives and getting hidden agendas accomplished within these reductions. I can assure you, there's nothing farther from the truth. These were not easy decisions, and they were not taken lightly. Please trust that these decisions were not made with any intentions other than reducing expenses in our Education and Operations Fund. I've been told that there have been some personal attacks on social media towards some of our staff members. I believe some of this stems from the belief that certain staff members have a great influence over me or that they are simply running the corporation in place of me. Once again, nothing could be further from the truth. If you want to blame someone for any of the decisions that are being made in this corporation, please blame me. Do I discuss decisions with members of administrative and business staff? Absolutely. Do I get advice from them from time to time? Absolutely, but at the end of the day, I'm the one responsible for the decisions that affect this corporation. Here's the point of the statement that I am reading. First, please understand that the decisions we have made concerning reductions in spending are very difficult. Unfortunately, there may be more reductions coming once we see the effects of SCA One. We will continue to be transparent, and we will communicate these decisions when appropriate. We have some plans that we'll put, that we will put in place soon that will foster transparency and communication even more. Secondly, please understand that there are two sides to every story. Things you see stated on social media can often have a very different story if you look, if you talk to someone else on the other side of the situation. Lastly, please show some grace towards our staff that you may even have issues with. They're human, they have feelings, and they have families. Leadership is not easy. You rarely make people happy, and you are rarely right, no matter what decision you make. Here's what I'm offering. If you have issues with the school corporation and the decisions that we're making, please make an appointment with Shelley Smith, right here, my administrative assistant. You can reach her at three one seven nine nine six three seven two zero. I'll be glad to talk with you about your concerns, as long as they fall within, within what I can legally discuss. I will show you budget numbers for the past several years, explain why we made the. I will show you budget numbers for the past several years, explain why we made the decisions concerning budget cuts, how we are currently spending funds, and what we are, what we are allowed to pay for out-of-bond funds and other topics that may be concerning. Here's my one request. Please try to come with solutions, not just concerns or complaints. I will be glad to work with staff or members of the community to get through these tough budgetary times. For those of you that have reached out with words of support or those that have put us in your prayers, I wanna thank you. Please continue to offer up your support and prayers, it is needed, and thank you for attention to this matter and for listening to me. So, once again, just wanted to be transparent, kind of talk about what I'm hearing going on and just offer some ways that maybe we can uh, stem some of that and, and work together. A few other things to go over here, just, uh, what's going on in our corporation. Uh, wanna update, we did receive some grants. Uh, we received a garden grant through the Whole Kids Foundation for three thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we did get the school safety grants for, it was a little over seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe. Um, digital learning grants, I believe that was thirty-one thousand, am I right there, Andrew? Um, digital learning grant this time around is focusing a lot on artificial intelligence and kind of how that, you know, how we need to prepare kids for living, uh, in, in a society where AI is becoming much more prevalent, so we'll be working um, on that a little bit. Uh, we have the multilingual family resource nights, uh, that is tomorrow from five thirty to seven thirty. Uh, let's see, a little bit about our professional development day that took place last Friday, August twenty-ninth. Uh, we had all kinds of uh, neat sessions for our teachers. Um, some of those were classroom management, cultural awareness, mandated reporting for child abuse and neglect, navigating a classroom with diabetic epileptic or severe allergic students, uh, the power of music to unite, and the importance of employee wellness with some chair yoga, and benefits health savings account one-on-one. Uh, middle school is having their trash bag sales as a fundraiser. Elementary, sorry, it's MES, sorry. Yeah, elementary is trash bag sales and I already talked about the garden grant that they received. Um, high school has their fall mum and blueberry pickup on September eighteenth. Um, Girls Cost Country had a great invitational where they won a championship, congratulations to them. And Boys Cost Country had, uh, two top ten finishes. Uh, Colton Smith finished second, Jacob Williamson ninth. The singing stars for August, this comes from, uh, Mrs. Slavens. Uh, concert choir was Madeline Snediger. Um, sixth grade boys for second period was Kaiden Moran. Third period, sixth grade girls, Claire McDonald. Seventh grade Peyton King. Seventh, uh, seventh period, sixth grade girls, Aubrey Keller. And shooting stars award goes to Haley Smith. I think that's all I have. Thank you for listening to all that.
Mr. Webber, I, I appreciate your statement, but that, the one thing I guess, I think we might help with that, I mean, I've seen some of those same things on social media, right? And some of them are really unfair, some of them, maybe you're just, some of them are unfair. But maybe we should think about like doing like a frequently asked questions section on our webpage. I mean, I, the thing I've picked up on that is that people don't understand. I mean, like, the whole school finance, I mean, it's really complex. And I think there's a real misunderstanding, and I think from our perspective, I mean, and this is everybody at this table, right? We could probably do a better job of like making sure people understand, not trying to put more on you, but it's just an idea. I think,
Yeah.
I saw Hamilton Southeastern, I think, did something like that. I mean, I think if every school's doing it, I mean, fighting that battle.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, I've heard a lot of people say, you know, why are they looking to buy or building or expanding or fixing the roof? Right, and I think people don't get that concept of this bucket, this bucket, this bucket. So, you know, I do think there's some of that that we, hopefully could maybe dispel some of that. That's the one complaint I've seen a lot.
Sure.
That I think is just a, a honestly misunderstanding.
We can work on that.
I mean, not trying to give you more work, but it's, it's, it's a suggestion, right?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be that hard to do.
Yeah.
We can get that done.
Hey, now, people still have to go look at it, that's on them, right?
Yep.
I do appreciate your statement.
Are there any final comments? Any other discussion? With that, I just need a
Quiet group.
Motion for adjournment?
I saw mode.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sears. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, five to zero.
Thank you all for coming.